Hey, gonna call the Southeast Consolidated Zoning Board meeting to order. If you get our roll call, please.
Dan Foyle.
Here.
John Lloyd.
Here.
Kelly Raff.
Present.
Ken Klingensmith.
Present.
Fred Wingert on Zoom.
Present.
Dennis Boland. Emily Coleman is absent. We have a call.
If we could have the statement for hybrid in-person virtual meeting read, please.
This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. This meeting is being held in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. For Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble, please call nine one three seven one five one seven zero zero. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click raise hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine. Please do not utilize the raise hand function until the start of the agenda item about which you desire to comment. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The Zoom moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. The chairman may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. When your name is called by the moderator, your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, followed by your comments. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead note for the record that you agree with the previous individual's comments. There will be a 10 seconds remaining warning sound. For board members and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking so that the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, agenda items. First thing, down there under board reports, item C, progress reports on the Stillwell community plan. We're going to delete that from this meeting, and I think it'll come back, it sounds like, when we have something to report. Other than that, could we get a motion? I mean, with that correction, then, could we get a motion to approve the agenda?
Can I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Then Boland, I'll second that motion.
Okay, got a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the agenda is approved with deleting that item under the board reports. Any conflicts of interest or external contacts? Seeing none? Minutes from the October 5th meeting? Anybody wants to make a motion?
Kelly Raff, I'm gonna make a motion. We approve the minutes from the November 6th meeting. Oh wait, October 5th meeting, sorry.
Dan Foyle, a second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes from the October 5th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Okay. Meetings are approved. Board reports.
Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. There were no Board of County Commissioners updates since the last meeting. The case that, if you recall, the meeting for the Southeast Zoning Board last month will be scheduled for the Board of County Commissioners meeting next Thursday. So if you'd like, I can go on to the planning commission updates. The, there was no meeting for the planning commission in October. The next planning commission meeting will be November 29th. That was a schedule change. It was regularly scheduled for November 22nd. That'll be rescheduled to November 29th. We'll have a couple of items for update and review with the planning commission on that meeting. Also, as part of that, for subcommittees, we do have the Sunflower Area Plan update. As you may recall, we mentioned that staff is beginning work on that, and we have a subcommittee that's been appointed to the planning commission. And they had their first meeting last Friday, October 28th, with an introduction to the plan update. And we'll have the next committee meeting on December 9th. At that meeting, we're going to invite the City of DeSoto and County Public Works staff to provide updates for that Sunflower Area Plan. And we'll have continuing ongoing meetings about average about once a month. So we'll be bringing back updates, and eventually we'll be bringing that plan update to the planning commission. That concludes board reports. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Business before the board, application number SE22249. FDP Final Development Plan, Platt 175th Street and Kenneth Road. That applicant has requested a continuance to the December meeting. If we could get a motion.
Dennis Boland, I'll make the continue that to the December meeting.
Kelly Raff, second.
Right, a motion in a second. To continue this item till a December meeting. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll continue that to the next meeting. This brings us to item B. Application number SE22242CUP, a conditional use permit at 2600 West 199th Street. Fred Kibler III applicant and Anna Louise Briggs Trust landowner. Okay, staff report.
Good evening. Michelle Oniger, County Planning Staff. Just want to bring your attention to this copy of an email that's in front of you. This is a comment that we received between the publication and this meeting. Want to make sure that you have these in addition to the comments that are in your staff report packet. Again, this application for a conditional use permit for earthmoving excavation and fill use. CUP was an application, is an application as a result of a violation of work without a permit on site. Once notified, the applicant has stopped work. So if you've been out on the site, you may have seen some piles or where it looks like dirt work has occurred. That was the reason for this, the stop work order. So the applicant has worked with us to submit a conditional use permit to allow for that process to continue. If you look at the map on the screen, this is the location of the 150 acre parcel. It's along 199th Street and just west of State Line Road. Here's an aerial of the property. You can see that the site is very large, 159 acres. The area that's outlined in yellow is the area to be excavated. This is under some Evergy power lines. So it's, it's about eight acres of that 159 acres. Evergy is aware of the proposed activity and has provided the applicant with guidelines for work within their easements. This is a private easement between the property owner and Evergy, so it's not something that the county would typically get involved with. This is a site plan for the project. I've colored in the eight different cells that the applicant has identified for the project, one through eight. The, some things to note are the northwest corner, which is number seven. That is 147 feet from the property line, which exceeds the 100-foot setback requirement for excavation. The southern closest corner, which is in cell two, is about 745 feet from the western property line. And additionally, you can, you can kind of see it on this plan. I didn't really highlight it, but you can also see a little bit on this aerial. There are some trees and hedge rows between the property lines, so those will help with the visual impact and potential sound dampening. So this is a summary of the proposal. To excavate eight acres of the 159 acres that are under the power lines. What the proposal states is that they will take the two top feet off the top soil, put that aside, and then take the next six six feet that will be trucked off to residential building sites, swapped with rocky soils that are taken from that site, and it will be put back in the hole. And then the top two feet of the top soil will be put back in place. That will allow for the row crops to be reestablished and in the future green space, because you can't build anything within those utility lines. One of the guidelines for the Evergy work in the rider, work in their easements is that they maintain the end, the before and after elevations under those lines be maintained. So that's the end result. The proposals for three-year term. Hours proposed are Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And I want to clarify this. I clarified this with the applicant's representative today. It, the traffic expected is up to 80 vehicle trips per day, which is 40 vehicles. There was some confusion with some of that, so it's not 80 vehicles, which would be twice as many trips. So it's 80 vehicle trips. One trip is in, one trip is off. So that would be two trips. Traffic would then go to 199th Street and then typically north on Mission to where the activity is actually in Overland Park. Water application for dust control will be provided when necessary, and the activity will stop if that becomes an issue. Restoration, the cells will be put back in crop rotation once excavation is complete. So it will go back to what it is today. You, if, again, if you were out there any point this summer, Evergy was also out there working on their lines. So there was dirt movement and activity pretty much all summer because of Evergy and then the beginning of this project. No more than two cells will be active at one time. Staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit, subject to stipulations. I want to make sure that for the stipulations, if they're part of your motion, that stipulation number 14 need to add trips into it. So 80 vehicle trips per day and not 80 vehicles per day. Just want to make sure that that is clarified. And then staff does have a suggested motion if you see fit to use it. Applicant and an applicant representative are both here to answer any questions you may have also.
Right. Michelle. Okay, questions for staff?
So this is Ken Klingensmith. You'd indicated that typically it'd be north on Mission. Does that mean that there could be 10,000 trucks traveling through Stillwell and 199th to 69 Highway?
Not sure I understand the question. Can you repeat that, please?
You commented that typically all the traffic would be going down 199th and up Mission. But is it possible that they could travel through Stillwell and 199th to 69th Highway?
I, that's probably something that the applicant could answer. He knows more of the customers that he is working with and where their activity is. From what I understand, it's up 199th or 99th, 199th North to Mission, and there's some new subdivisions up there and then back around down State Line and kind of a circle like that. These are specifically for residential fill sites. It's not like American Topsoil where they're taking topsoil and they're selling it to various places or selling it from the site. This is very specific to a handful of builders.
Thank you.
So this is Dan Foyle, question, so to kind of go along with what Ken said. So where is the dirt going? I mean, most, so I called Sean about this because someone had called and asked me about it at one point. And, and I sat on my back patio briefly, and, and there was 33 trucks in an hour and 15 minutes that went by on Mission Road. And anybody that's driven up State Line knows that State Line has been trashed by the heavy trucks. I mean, it is a disaster from 195th Street all the way up to 170 something. So my question is, if it's going north, why are they coming across 199th and up Mission? Why wouldn't they go, if they're already going down, coming down? You're saying they're doing a loop around, which I witnessed. I followed one of them. Why are they, you know, doing a loop and coming down? Why aren't they, you know, going back on the State Line as well? Because I mean, you know, Mission's one of the only roads we have left out there that hasn't been torn up by the, the heavy construction trucks in my mind. But, but my question is, who monitors the, you know, 80 a day? Because I saw 33 in an hour and, you know, something. So who, who's going to be there to monitor that? And, and say, you know, or is there?
Um, it, it would really be by complaint. We don't have a good way to have somebody sit out there and monitor how many trucks come in and off the site. Some days it could be done, some days there may be 40. It really varies on the activity and the time of year. Probably going to matter with the interest rates and how fast they're building and such. It's really, at that point, by complaint, and then we would look into that further.
How long did they do work before, this is Dan Foyle, how long did they do work before they were issued a stop ordering idea?
I don't know. We stopped work the same day that we got the complaint.
And is this a type of a group that would know they needed to get a permit before they started work typically?
I don't know.
Sean Pendley, Planning Staff, certainly we don't know the answer to that about this applicant. The applicant can certainly provide more details as to what they've done in the past and how they've acted. But as Michelle noted, the day that staff was aware of this, we had an inspector visit the site, notified the contractor of the stop work order and the requirement for a CUP, and the owner and applicant were willing to stop work immediately and move forward with a conditional use permit application.
I think I saw this in there. This is John Lloyd, by the way, saw in there. So part of the actual CUP, where they're, they have to put their SWIP plan in place and
Yes.
erosion control.
Stipulation for the land disturbance permit, and that is part of the land disturbance permit. If you're disturbing more than one acre, and they will be doing that. So that's, that's through the public works.
Okay, thank you.
This is Dan Foyle. How long ago was the traffic report done that was referenced here?
That, you'll have to ask the applicant that information. Is there a date on it? I don't have it in front of me.
Any other, any more questions for staff?
Yeah, this is Ken. I was looking, I didn't necessarily see it referenced in the public works memorandum, but I know there's improvements happening along Mission Road down to 191st Street. What's the impact between the improvement timeline that's being made in this three-year conditional use permit?
We have a public works representative on Zoom that can potentially help us answer. From what I understand is that, you know, with the, with the CUP activity and the land disturbance permit, public works will work with the applicant if there is any traffic changes with State Line or Mission Road to figure out the alternative best way.
And can we, can we potentially through this process help define what the alternative routes would be to ensure that they either go more to State Line or away from more of the proper Stillwell area to get to those sites?
Yeah, you can, you can limit it to arterial streets. You're going to get, you're obviously going to get that filter in traffic when they're going from those arterials to the site, which is typical. But yeah, that can be specified.
This is Sean Pendley, Planning Staff. We have me, Callenberger, with Public Works Department on Zoom. It may be helpful if we could provide any additional information on that or any plans for Mission Road or other arterial road traffic.
Yeah, Sean, and thank you and welcome. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm standing in tonight for Martin and Tangura. He has COVID. So you're getting the B team, but that, those improvements on Mission Road are planned for the 2023 slash 2024 construction season. So there will be some overlap there and, and with, we'll look to definitely coordinate, you know, traffic to keep them on the kind of the section line arterial roads as well, so.
I'll answer your question, Ken.
Yes, thank you.
More questions for staff? See more questions for the staff? I could get the applicant, please.
Good evening. My name's Tim Tucker. T U C K E R, Phelps Engineering, address 1270 North Winchester, Lath, Kansas. Speaking on behalf of Fred Kibler, lives on the property and is part of the trust. I think Michelle did a good job, I think, explaining what we're doing. We've got eight cells, as she described, which are really just eight trenches. Each one's roughly an acre in size. And we'll come in and we will borrow out eight foot. The top two feet will be wind rode and stockpiled to the side of the trench. The bottom six is hauled off and going to be used primarily at Sundance Ridge. That's a couple miles north. And then rocky, rocky mix of soil and rock will be brought back in, put in the bottom six foot compacted, and then the top two foot reapplied, brought back to previous grade, and it will be put back into row crop production. We chose to use underneath the the power lines where the easement is. Because as Michelle noted, that with future development, when this piece of ground, it's probably going to develop at some point into a residential development. They won't be able to build any structures within that easement. Yards could go into it, but not any structure. So it has no detrimental effect to future development of that piece of ground. Then I think we've received like seven letters from neighbors and they had some concerns, really two, two main concerns. One's drainage. So as far as drainage goes, this site's located downhill of both subdivisions. Lake at South Wick actually drains onto the field where we're doing the work. So we have no impact of runoff onto their property. Willow Bend is located in a different drainage altogether. So we're working in a drainage that goes to Massey Creek Trib A. Willow Bend is located in Massey Creek Trib AA. So it doesn't, it doesn't even have any drainage associated with this project. Second concern was traffic, which we've already kind of started talking about. I chose 199th to Mission to go up to get to Sundance Ridge. And the reason I chose that is because the pavement is good. As you go to State Line, it's, I don't even know if it's pavement. I think it's, I think it's chip seal over the old gravel road, and it's not in the greatest condition. And I, I was trying not to add any truck traffic to that. If it's the wishes that you want us to go to State Line up, it's actually a quicker route for us. But that's why I chose one I did. Your question on whether whether we would go over towards going straight, take 199th all the way over to the highway, that's a possibility. But all of our work, 99% of this material is going to Sundance Ridge. And the problem that we've got there is it's like two foot down, we hit rock. So we're dealing with Johnson County wastewater and their sewers. So you have to put suitable fill material in the trenches. You can't put rock material back in that you've taken out. So we're taking that blasted rock material mixed with soil, filling in these trenches, and then taking the good material over there to meet Johnson County wastewater requirements for backfill. That's, that's the drive of this whole conditional use project. 199th Streets County Arterial, which is designed for this truck traffic. The truck traffic that's going to be generated is going to be very similar to what they just probably seen during harvest time. Same kind of trucks coming in, going out with seed. And as noted, it's, it's 40 trucks in, 40 trucks out for a total of 80 trips. That came directly from the contractor. So you'd asked about the time period before we got shut, they got shut down, annoying that they were doing anything wrong. And so they were out there for two weeks. So based on the operation that they had going on, that was like the maximum that they had in a day. So I, I don't see, that, that's based on four trucks. It just takes that much time to fill the truck and unload the trucks that they're not going to exceed the 80. The entrance, the construction entrance that we've proposed is roughly 1,500 feet from the entrance to both the subdivisions there to the west. It's located at a low point. I did the study with the application as far as site distance, and we meet all site distance requirements. Public Works has looked at that and I think, I think that answers all your guys' questions and kind of staff's questions. If I miss one, I'd be glad to answer any questions. We're in agreement with stipulations one through 22. As written, if you guys want to stipulate that we use State Line, we're fine with that. Otherwise, I stand for questions.
Kelly Raff, so are you saying that the contractor who was doing this work, he was, he'd never done work like this before to understand that he needed a CUP?
Yeah, not in the county, no.
And then I had another question, but I just forgot it, so.
Well, you're kind of, this is Ken. What will they, what will be done differently than what they did this summer? Because this summer, there was dirt on the road, there was dust everywhere. It was just really poorly done. And that gives us pause or concern just from living with that in the Stillwell community.
Okay, so the, Fred actually lives on the property, and he'll be, he, he was going out cleaning up the roads and stuff. But I, I think they had actually done another trench closer to the subdivision the year before. I think that's where the complaints came from. And he wasn't happy with the way it was done either, Fred. And we've got guidelines set up for if there's dust problems, we'll have a water truck out there on the, the road, haul road in and out that we water it down. And after a rain event, until it dries up, we'll shut down operations. So we're not tracking out. Fred, like I said, Fred lives out there. He's got equipment to clean up what goes on the road, and he'll continually monitor that on a daily basis. Fred, like I said, Fred lives out there. He's got equipment to clean up what goes on the road and he, he'll continually monitor that on a daily basis. Um. I mean, I, I think, I think we got better outline of what, what's expected and what you guys want.
Will Phelps Engineering stay with him throughout the three years on the project?
Yes.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, this is Fred Winger. Um, who, who is actually the contractor? I'm. I, I've had this concern on other issues that have come before us. Is Fred Kibler the contractor?
Uh, no, he is not. It is, uh, Weir's. Uh, Ron Weir's Construction.
Okay, well, where is Ron Weir's Construction tonight?
No, he's not the applicant, Fred.
Okay, but Mister Chairman, that's my concern is the applicant that is doing the work. Is the, I mean, is, is Phelps Engineering going to be held responsible for the CUP?
That'll be the landowner.
But the, you know, we say the applicant is Tim Tucker Phelps Engineering. But who is the CUP going to be issued to?
Now, what the applicant is, uh. It's the, it's Fred Kibler and the Anna Lewis Bridges Trust.
That's different than what's on the staff report.
That's not what's on, that's not what's on the staff report.
On behalf of the property owner, right?
But, but the property owner is actually the applicant.
Okay, well, I, I, you know, I think the contractor who's going to be doing the work. That should be held accountable for how things are, go and don't go should, should be present, and I've expressed this in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred.
And this is Ken. I echo what, um. Fred's comments were, which is why I was asking about if Phelps Engineering was gonna be engaged throughout the whole term of the project. Um, just based on Phelps reputation.
Agreed. I have a kind of a follow-up question to that process too, Tim. So. I saw in the drawing that you had the construction entrance on there, but I didn't see a detail for it.
We'll be using the county standard detail. When it, it is on, I believe it's on there.
Maybe I missed it. I was looking on, on the screen. I know you usually put it on there. It's usually the.
So in addition, in addition to this application, if, if this is approved. There's a stipulation, we have to have a SWIP. We also have to get an entrance permit. And, uh, work with, go through the county, get the land disturbance permit, so all that'll be addressed with county engineering.
I think, well, as you know, I mean, one of the important parts of the construction entrance is that big rock and helping to knock the mud off the tires. Is there a, is there any? Regulation or rule that if that, like if that gets like completely bound up and overrun, that it has to be replaced?
I would say the county inspectors will monitor that. Um, I mean, I, I. If it gets bound up too bad and Fred's gotta spend every evening out there cleaning it off the road, I, I think we'll get it taken care of, but.
Okay, thank you.
This is Kelly Ross. Um, so just for clarification, I'm more from my part. What's being done at this property with excavation? It's not, whatever's being done there is not to improve this property at all. You're just utilizing. The resources there and then taking it someplace else, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
So it's not gonna improve it at all, but okay, thank you.
Or be a detriment.
But I think I did see that you have plants or you're replanting and. After you're done.
Yeah, so after, after we put the two-foot topsoil back on, put it back to grade, if it's. Harvest time, it'll go back into row crop. Otherwise we'll put down a, a rye or something like that, a temporary cover.
Dan, well, is the entrance that is proposed, the current entrance as it is right now, is it the same spot or is it in a different spot?
No, it's been relocated.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public comments. Do we have any Zoomers?
There are people on Zoom, but no one has raised their hand indicating they'd like to comment.
Okay, let's, uh, let's, uh, start with people in the room. Do we have anybody here who would like to speak? Nobody, uh. Nobody in the room wants to speak? No Zoomers raising their hand? Okay.
Oh, one just raised their hand.
Okay.
So just a moment, let me. Set them up.
I'm starting to get my feelings hurt.
Okay, you can, um, you're unmuted. You can state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Brad Yater. I live at a hundred ninety-ninth and twenty-fifth Canterbury Street. Off of a hundred nine, one nine nine two five Canterbury Street off a hundred ninety-ninth. My property is the one probably seventy and Willow Ben Ranch, which is probably the one that's seven hundred and fifty feet from there.
Okay.
Okay, so you, you know, um, you know, when, when the two weeks went by, it seemed like there was a tremendous amount of trucks and there was a lot of dirt and. You know, the, the gentleman across the road, my neighbor Brian stacked directly across the street from me, which is part of Lake of Southwick, you know, when we had a. Heavy rain, he had some flooding in his yard, not in his house, but you know, he also, you know. Experienced some of the same conditions of the dirt and the dust and, uh. And our air conditioners on our houses and so forth like that, so. I just wanna say it felt like there was a lot more trucks than forty trucks a day going in and out of there. For the two weeks of, they were open and running. And my concern is, is that you have two rural neighborhoods here. With small children, women pushing strollers, children on tricycles, kids on bicycles that go between the two neighborhoods back and forth. And running those big trucks, it kind of concerns me on the safety of the, the women and the children crossing both neighborhoods back and forth. So I, I'm in favor that if you guys are gonna approve something that, you know, they use, uh, state line road, I've lived here since two thousand eight. Uh, state line would be a faster route and they can get in the Sunday and ran, uh, sundan, Sundance up there. Right off of a hundred ninety-ninth, I mean, off state line. It, it would be just go east on a hundred ninety-ninth and go up state line. And, uh, that's the comments that I have right now. That's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brad. Right?
Okay, it looks like we have another, uh, on Zoom.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yes, Keith Lang at two zero one two five Canterbury Street. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep. So. I also live in, uh, Willabon Ranch and, uh. I don't know how long the previous work was done, but when you, when you go out there and look at the work that's done and the amount of. Uh, rocks and, and crap that's, that still hasn't been covered. I'm guessing it was much more than two weeks. I'm guessing it's probably thousands of truckloads. Not hundreds of truckloads that were done before somebody stopped them. And then they're finally going through the legal process to ask for a permit, so. We're, we're literally dealing with months, if not six months. And now they want another three years, so three and a half years of this crap that we're gonna have to deal with, that's just unacceptable. I mean, if you guys, I understand progress and allowing this stuff, I'm not trying to stop progress, but. How about, how about a thousand truckloads a year or two thousand, not twenty thousand, we're talking sixty thousand truckloads that we're gonna allow? It's, that, that, that's ridiculous. And if you do allow it, it needs to go east and then north on state line to get to wherever you, you wanna go. I mean, I have ATVs going down Canterbury, you know, all week, you know, kids and. Uh, families coming back and forth from Southwick over to us and back and forth and, and, uh. That the, uh, where the, uh, truck work is being done, it's kind of a blind spot. When they come over the hill and the speed limit into Southwick and, and, uh. In our, uh, development is forty-five miles an hour. And those trucks are probably doing ten to fifteen miles per hour over that. Even at forty-five, that's ridiculous speed in a residential area. And this is just another example of what, of what the county is trying to push with this. Uh, truck route on a hundred ninety-ninth in the future, and it's absolutely outrageous. That this is going through the communities like this, it's ridiculous. This has got to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Okay, um, any other Zoomers?
No.
All right. Um, any other questions for the zoning board, I mean, from the zoning board or staff or the applicant? So Tim, maybe? I did a little math up here. Not always very good at it, but I am kind of in this business also, so. I came up, I did it twice. I came up with that seventy-seven thousand four hundred and forty-four bankyards of dirt. That's eight acres, six feet deep, right? Okay, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm wanting to double check, so. That only if, uh, if they're using big tandem trucks at twenty yards a truck, that's. Over the life of the project, that's only forty-six hundred truckloads then, is what I come up with. And so if you max them out and you did the forty trucks a day. We're on, that, that's a hundred and sixteen days. And I'm not asking them to compress that, I'm just saying it's not gonna be sixty thousand trucks, I think. It looks to me like if you're allowing twenty percent swell off the bankyards, that. Maybe you're looking at forty-six hundred yards. I mean, if that's a few. I would mean forty-six hundred trucks if you completely maxed it out. Is that? Has anybody done that math? Does that sound about right? Okay. But I, I, I did it twice, so I'm pretty sure it's right, so.
Hey, John, Fred Winger here, um. That doesn't mean that the applicant can't haul the dirt somewhere else, correct?
Nobody can't get it out of there. I mean, I'm saying if it's. If it's, if it's six feet, if it's eight feet about down to rock. Um, their plan is to excavate eight feet. Or excavate two feet off, then, then haul out, dig out six feet deep and haul it off. Six feet deep over eight acres is forty-six hundred truckloads.
This Kelly Ross, that was my question. So how, who, how do people come up with these numbers of three years? Forty trucks, trips per day? I mean, you did the math, so that, I mean, that make.
I, I think, I think that was just the term they requested for the CUP and then they tried to, tried to qualify and limit the truck trips.
I was just curious.
Yes.
Um, with talking with the applicant, um, they had an estimate of the amount of time that they figured it would take. To complete the project, um, it's really dependent on weather and the activity, the housing activity. So they could not have any activity on the site for weeks. And then they may have a few warm days where they're able to get things out. Um, we suggested to the applicant to, um, be very generous with the time that they are, that they are requesting. So that they don't have to come back and ask for a, um. Extension when it's complete, if it's before that three years, they can let us know and we can close the CUP out.
Kelly Ross, I understand that sometimes we gotta think about the people who live there, that how much it disrupts their lives over three years. I mean, I know. A lot of these people have families and they may have a big birthday celebration and that's the day they're gonna be hauling these trucks or graduation parties or. So I mean, there does have to be that fine balance that may have progress, but also not always what works for the applicant, but disrupting people's lives. For an undetermined amount of time as well, like that's a little bit where I feel like. You know, there's gotta be a better balance between the county and always thinking about the people who are already invested in those areas and living there. And they're living there for a certain quality of life. Um, and sometimes that just gets missed a lot, you know, we can justify the numbers and all that, but. You know, you only graduate from high school once and have a big party. You don't want trucks and dust and whatever blowing by as well or. So there is that, you know, balance.
Well, and, and this is kind of a clink in smith, in the, if I, if I'm. Where the piece of property is, it's sitting between an RN, one single family zoned area and a PLRD single family. So it's a rural piece of property that's stuck between two, so two. Single-family home zoned areas, so it's not like this is rural Stillwell where it's just out. You know, similar to where some of the other ones have been where they've done this kind of work.
This Dan, well, I, you know, I, I spoke earlier about how many trucks went by and just the time I sat and read a book, so I have a hard time thinking that thirty-three trucks in an hour and fifteen minutes, how that translates into forty. In a whole day, um, seven AM seems really early to me as well, you know, if you're backed up to that property, you don't want, you know, excavators beeping and planking and all that kind of stuff. And, and then the other thing is, is the, the Mission Road traffic, I go back to that again. Think of all the houses and all the people and the school traffic at that time of day that's on Mission Road. Now, and these trucks were hauling and not just dirt, they were moving really fast. And I know that's not the applicant's, you know, responsibility or anything, but, but they're gonna do that. They're paid to haul dirt as quick as, as quick as they can. I think that, again, state line is already trashed. I mean, it's not gonna get much worse. Um, and, and Mission is like, again, a decent road and it's got a lot of traffic that. You know, you think of all the kids that go to Stillwell Elementary every morning and they get to school. You know, at, at eight fifteen, and I remember when this was going on, there was dirt all over the road. You couldn't hardly pull out onto a hundred ninety-ninth street off of Mission because of all the trucks coming by and. And they have to turn real wide, you know, to turn onto Mission, going to go north there. And I mean, it was a mess and I had, you know, there was a lot of people that were very, very upset about it and. And honestly, I was a little disappointed when I heard that there wasn't a permit done and it makes me. Hesitant because if they were, there was a sense of urgency behind what they were doing, it seemed like, like they were just trying to get as much done as they possibly could. And so now, you know, but don't get me wrong, the residents are gonna, you know, probably keep an eye on it and so forth and try to keep that under control. But, uh, you know, it, it, to me, it's, it's a little bit, um. Uh, I, I have a hard time knowing that they're gonna self-police this.
Mm-hmm, Kelly Ross, I agree with that, kind of started off on the wrong foot and it's just hard to believe that. I mean, Sundance Ridge is a large neighborhood that's been going up, that somewhere. Someone in this process didn't say, wait a minute, do we need to have a CUP? But I, I know that's my assumption.
You said thirty-three trucks in an hour. There's no way in the world load thirty-three trucks in an hour from that site. I don't.
They had them lined, I drove, I drove over and looked at, they had them lined up, they had the big excavator and they were just. Doing like that as fast as they could.
But they could, you could still can't load thirty-three trucks in an hour. I don't care who you are.
Um, let, let's back up here for just a second because we still. We were still kind of in the questioning phase, so does anybody have any more questions for the staff or the applicant?
Uh, Fred Winger, I, I've got a question for Ken. Um, Ken, you've been involved in the Stillwell, uh, community plan. Does this area follow in the Stillwell community plan?
Uh, no. The actual boundaries within the Stillwell Community Plan where it was reviewed is the more down into the hundred ninety-ninth street. Uh, Old Town Stillwell, Stillwell Station and up Metcalf. It does not hit Mission.
So this is maybe, uh, for you then, Sean, um, you know, this is an industrial type activity we're talking about, right? So we're, we're taking, um, dirt, we're taking big trucks, you know, industrial type activities. Uh, imply infrastructure, you know, was this property ever intended to have? An industrial type activity on it in terms of infrastructure as part of the, the county's plan for this area?
Sean Penley, County Planning Staff. The property zone RUR rule, agricultural. See, uh, dirt excavation operations are allowed with the CUP in RUR zone property. It's not considered an industrial use. We have, as you may know, have had other CUPs approved for topsoil operations. This would be similar to that and actually probably less if you look at it in terms of total comparison, because with a topsoil operation. Because with a topsoil operation, they generally can excavate on the entire site. So in this case, you would be talking potentially up to 150 acres of area that could be disturbed. They do it in cells as well. They do it in phases. But in this area, this application is a dirt excavation operation in RUR. This would be allowed with the CUP, but it is in a very targeted area. It's only eight acres of the entire 150 acres. So it's very limited in terms of the total area of operation and activity. So, but it's not unlike any other CUP that we have had before. This is a little bit unique in the fact that, and to some extent, I don't know if the applicant has, has ever stated this, but they may not have been aware just about the requirement for dirt excavations. And at what point does it become a requirement for a CUP? It's only at the point when it exceeds 1,200 yards, cubic yards or more of excavation that requires it. They may or may not have known that. Certainly as soon as they are aware of it, they stopped once staff notified them. But it is not totally unusual to have dirt excavation on an RUR property with the CUP.
Thank you. I have a question, Sean. The county, unlike some of the cities, they don't require a street cleaning bond, do they?
I do not believe we have a street cleanup bond or, uh, bonds for the cleanup work. However, there is a requirement for that. And I believe we have that as a stipulation to CUP. Maybe we could have Lee Kellenberger correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I know that that's something that is a requirement, that's an enforceable requirement. But I don't believe they have a bond required for cleanup or street, street cleanup. Because this is again, is kind of an unusual activity. I don't know, Lee, if you could elaborate on that?
Right, correct. That would fall under their land disturbance permit. There would be a, a maintenance, a maintenance bond essentially, a performance surety bond. So that if they weren't able to clean something up, we could exercise that performance surety. That would be where it would cover, like if things were tracked onto the road, we would, you know, issue a notification of violation. They would have so many days to clean it up or time, timeframe to clean it up. If that went neglected, they weren't able to clean it up, we could use our bond at that point to clean it up ourselves.
So, so there is one, it, they don't call it an actual street cleaning bond?
It's not a cleaning bond or a street maintenance bond. It's not for repairs to the road or for that kind of thing. It's just for, it just falls under tracking of erosion or sediment in dirt out of the facility. We do have a performance bond in place for that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other? You were, you had your hand raised quite a while ago. Yeah. Sure. Name and address, if you would, please.
I am Fred Kibler and I do live at 2,600 West 199th Street, Stillwell, Kansas. And my family is here also. I live out there. I have never once had any of the people from South Wick or from the Willows there come down and introduce themselves to me or anything like that. They take the right to drive their razors, four wheelers across my property. I have stopped them and had conversations with them about that because I am a posted, no trespassing piece of property. I have pictures here that I took today of people from South Wick throwing their garbage, trees, everything like that over onto my piece of property. I don't appreciate that, but I don't go and try and make their lives worse. We aren't trying to run over any children. I see them. We are keeping this. What we're doing down there is we're just trying to, we're up against rock shelves before we jump the Blue River and can get back into dirt again. All we're trying to do is make, build streets for people to have communities and homes. We only have, I've got maybe two developers that we're doing this for. I am cleaning the streets. I, I do stormwater and air quality control for all of us here in Johnson County. I am Fred Kibler. I do native grass and wetland work. One of the only guys, I actually go to the projects and I identify and make sure these projects are done properly. So I care about what goes on on my property. If I'm not, this is not a bad guy deal. I am sorry if there's kids are. We've got three different trucking companies we'll use and we'll let you all know who those trucking companies are. We all live in our community. If they are running hard, please tell, there's only three people in this operation. Me, Ron Weirs, Phelps, they're helping with all the paperwork end of it. So there's really only two, three. Jag, Jag, Jeff Gatton. So there's a three of us. So if y'all are having any problems, anything like that, please get ahold of us. We will stop that. I clean those streets every night off the first. We did have an incident. We had a contractor go down with COVID. We had an open pit. The dirt came from clear over at 16, where the new quick trip is in Spring Hill. We had a contractor go down with COVID. He went to hospital on all that stuff. His guy said, we got to have somewhere to go with this dirt. We're under contract, get this quick trip up. We had a little mishap. I thought they were going to send a broom and stuff over to clean. They didn't. I was hollering at them, but I went out and did it myself. I was late. I was three days late. I apologize for that. But that got issue, that issue got taken care of. It was last year about this time. Our, what we were doing, we thought, like Sean said, we did everything correct down there. We did our construction entrances. We were trying to do everything as we do code for Overland Park. And I, landowners, we thought we were all right. We weren't. We ceased. We, they told us we could haul, still haul in, but we decided not even to haul in. That's why the pit looks as rough as it does right now. Because we just ceased all operation to make sure that we could get this going again and get our developments built. That's all we're trying to do. And it's not going to be 365 days a year. It's when the phase gets done, we're going to haul and we're going to haul and we're going to fill that phase so we can get pavement on. Then we may stop for a half a year. Then we may have a phase that opens up again. We got haul with it. It's not like our intermodal trucks that, hey, I look out my window too, and I see a great big orange truck doing 60 miles an hour across 199th. It's not that. So that's it. Yeah, that's, that's my part. I'm sorry I get a little passionate about things, but I live out there in our community. We have been for, since the 50s. My grandfather, Hubert Briggs and Louise Briggs bought that in 1950. And we enjoy our place yet and we're trying to make it pretty. I'm getting rid of our invasive species. It'd be nice if everybody else out there joined in, maybe come and ask me a question sometime about how to take care of things instead of drive across my property. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is Kelly Ross. I don't think anybody's trying to be evil or whatever, or think the worst, but, and I appreciate your due diligence. Unfortunately, we have applicants that aren't due diligent and doesn't always go that well. So if you are a due diligent applicant, we do appreciate those. But sitting up here, we don't know who those people are. So we, it's up to us to think of everything and, you know, we're not going after anybody. We're just trying to think of all aspects, so.
Perfect. Thanks, Kelly. No more zoomers have joined or raised their hand. All right. Okay, I'm going to close the public comments then and we'll do our board discussion.
This is Ken. One of the concerns I have is just related to the truck traffic potentially going down 199th, which Fred, I also really appreciate your comments because that is reassuring. But Mission Road, I mean, we've got the transportation plan with Karna clearly indicates that due to safety concerns and high maintenance costs, Johnson County takes an aggressive action to discourage truck traffic on the local routes. We also have a committee of about 63 people in Stillwell that are petitioning to get the Johnson County Commissioners to make 199th, 191st, all those roads to be no truck routes fully posted. And so I think with the truck traffic going up Mission, it would be more ideal if it would just go up State Line Road. And especially with Mission Road having improvements in 23 and 24 in the midst of this, that I can see needing to cause some diversion. And if they're going to end up going down 191st Street, because I think that's where that construction stops, you might as well just go up State Line Road.
Kelly Ross, I echo that. Only other thing I would add to that too, is maybe they consider, seven o'clock is still early. Everybody's going, maybe consider eight, 4:30 as a timeframe.
This is Ken. If they're going up State Line Road, I think it's the opposite direction of where everyone's going down Mission and down the new subdivisions to, to school.
I was just thinking more of the families that are living there early in the morning. You know, let them get, get their stuff together for the day. Get kids out of the house, get, you know, get their day going. And some of them are going off to work, then they'll be out of work before they start their construction. Was more the thought.
Yeah, this is John Lloyd. I, I'm, I'm, I'm generally in favor of this, but I think the point, some of the points about the traffic are well made. I mean, he can't, you know, he's got to get out of there one way or the other. And, you know, maybe State Line is a better route. I, I do think, I do think, you know, making sure that the streets are kept clean and, and, you know, that, that you follow everything that's in the CUP. Keep your SWIP up, you know, get your inspections after rains. And I don't know, sometimes, you know, when I've done projects like this where you really wanted to interface with a neighbor, sometimes I would, even though it's not required, maybe put up an informational sign with contact numbers if they want to call somebody about an issue. So they don't get, they're not, they don't feel like they're at a dead end. But, you know, that, I, I don't think that needs to be a stipulation. I'm just, that's kind of a comment for the good of the order. But I'm generally, if we're going to have all those stipulations, I'm, I'm generally in favor of it.
This is Dan Foyle. Also, Fred, I'd say that you probably get blamed for a lot of the other trucks that are going back because there's a lot of other traffic going on, you know, with all the development and everything. So there's probably less trucks or that are coming from you and then they're coming from other sites or whatever. But I, I would agree with, you know, the, what Ken said about State Line Route is, is very, very, you know, and I don't know if that, you know, Fred, you have to deal with it on a daily basis. Is that something that is workable or is that throw a kink in the plans at all or?
All right, yeah, I probably want Mr. Kibler to go to the podium just to get this on record.
It was just a circular route. It worked good to come in and go out. And you all know how State Line is. It's a holy wreck over there. I don't know who, why none of us will grab the reins and, you know, at least run a blade down State Line. I don't know why that is, but it's tough on the trucks over there too, because it beats our trucks up. And, you know, everybody wants to blame a truck driver these days. We're good, but then everybody wants to dislike us, to dislike truck drivers. But it is, it's, State Line's a rough road. We all ought to do something with it someday. So that's it. It, it was bad before the developments even came in. I've lived out here for 56 years now.
Yeah. We try to pull a horse trailer up, but I don't know how many rims we've ruined trying to do that.
Any more discussion?
This is Ken. I think on page seven of the staff report under item number four, I think if we could, if we use State Line Road, the last sentence says with sections of Mission Road that will be closed, which is that 2023, 2024 timeframe. Alternative routes will be used with trucks avoiding residential areas. I think we should just define that as either trucks will use State Line Road or define the alternative routes as State Line Road.
Where is that?
On page seven, item number four, under the zoning and regulation standard stipulation there.
This is Sean Pendley with planning staff. I think that's part of the staff analysis, what we would probably, if there is a, yeah, if there is a request from the zoning board to add a stipulation, we'd want to add that to the recommendations on page eight or nine. Probably what we, you would want to do is add a new stipulation that specifically addresses the truck route, because I don't think we have that stipulated.
Possibly we can add it under item number 14, since we're making a modification to the, any there, any way there?
Yeah, to add trips.
That it's 80 trips per day and that those trips would be on?
State line.
State Line Road? Or if we're using Mission Road, Mission Road, but the alternative would be State Line Road when Mission Roads closes?
So you're saying you're, Kelly Ross, you're saying you're fine with Mission Road except for this?
Not really. I prefer State Line.
I'm with State Line only. I mean, I get it that the road's already beat up, but why beat up another road?
Well, I guarantee you drive a little slower on State Line than on Mission.
Yeah, you will.
They go circular route. Go loaded north on State Line and back on, and then empty, come back on Mission. Empty truck.
Uh, this is Fred Winger. Just to clarify, Ken, you're, you're requesting that the, uh, the full load and the empty load use State Line, correct?
I guess I'm looking, I'm actually looking over to Fred and Tim from Phelps, if that's something they'd be agreeable to. It would be ideal, but. I'm going to say, Fred, I'm going to say yes, just based on Fred and Tim Tucker's agreement that they would be fine with that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, you know, I'm sympathetic to the landowners. I, I drove over to the site. I, I can appreciate the, the landowner that owns the property, but I can also appreciate the many homes that made a substantial investment in that area. They probably did, they assumed that it would develop at some point. I don't know that they assumed that there would be a major excavation project, you know, right over their property line going on for three years. So, you know, I do have some concerns. I think the operator has indicated that they will follow through on these commitments they have made tonight. And I would support it if State Line is used both with the empty haul and the full haul. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Fred.
Somebody want to make a motion with that changed, with that added stipulation?
Kelly Ross, would you just put at the end, limited to State Line Road only?
Under item number 14?
Yeah. After you add in the trips, 80 vehicle trips per day and limited to State Line Road access only?
199th west to State Line?
Yes. That work?
East.
East. Limited period, 199th east to State Line.
Yeah. Can I say something that we all kind of came up with? Well, with Sean and Tim and I were talking about these three groups, me, Weirs and Jag, we all work, we just don't work for one or two developers. We work for, we work for Matt Adams. We work for all these development companies out there. You may see us hauling dirt off of my ground one day and then we've got that done. Well, these trucks may be working for Matt Adams. They may be working for another company. They may be working. So it's hard to pinpoint guys down. So, you know, something's going to happen here where, you know, these, these guys could be working for somebody else and they aren't working for me that day. So that's going to be a deal too, where they're going to be pointing fingers at me and say, hey, Freddie's the one that the trucks are, no, it's not. It's for another company because we've got a lot of developments going on out there. No, it's not. It's for another company because we've got a lot of developments going on out there. Right now, what is it? I mean, down, down Mission Road, there's gonna be eighty seven houses going in down there, South Winds. Or Meadows, Southern Meadows, you're gonna have fifteen hundred, thirteen hundred houses coming in there. And that's a completely different contracting group there. So, you know, y'all got a lot of big things coming up in the future, but that's a problem that I see with. Pinpointing down to which trucks are coming out of every, you know, here and there. Sorry about that. That's just something we thought about.
Thank you, Fred.
Yep.
And I think that's why it is important for Stillwell to get the county commissioners to make these no truck routes and get them posted.
Yep.
And that would take care of it.
If not, it's just wide open season.
Yep, it's just gonna be, the problem's just gonna keep getting worse in the residential area around Stillwell. So I think. Hopefully, the committee that's gathering in Stillwell to make that happen will be successful at it.
Because Fred, from Keller ass, from what I've heard from you, you're basically saying you want the ability. That there is no defined truck route because there's gonna be. You don't know what trucks are gonna be there and where they're gonna be going, so.
We, we, I, I do.
Oh, you're, you're fine with the state line.
Tell all our guys to go down State Line.
Okay, you're just thinking in the future.
Day that we may not be hauling out of my pit, they may be working for another contractor that's. Running around in that community. I'm seeing a big problem here. You all are gonna try and make Spring Stillwell a no truck route. How are you gonna build your community? We all drive big trucks. One hundred and ninety ninth is the only way we've got to get from Missouri to Kansas. It amazes me, too. They build an intermodal and didn't have the infrastructure. That's nobody's fault. We're all got to work with it. We really do. And. You're not talking high density out there yet. You're talking three to four acres state houses out there. Wait till the high density comes in, which is coming out of the south. Southern Meadows. You talk about people and kids and everything like that. Holy cats. And a lot of the people out there. I've, I've brought my big truck. I don't have a big truck. I've got a forty five hundred with thirty eight foot trailer. Did in the middle of the road because I had a kid come and hit on me. Passing another cart in an Audi. I had to stop right in the middle of the road. It's not a lot of us. It's a lot of folks that live out there with a lot of money and big cars and fast. So some of these, these are all issues we all got to work out. But you cannot make a community a no truck route, especially a southern Johnson County. On the border end of Miami County, north end of Miami County. We're all ag out here yet, too. That's how we all grew up. What we all are until we turn into developments. So anyway, that's, we will run State Line. That's no problem. We all talked about that at the first. It was just gonna be a circle for us and everything, but we have no problem running State Line.
All right, thank you.
Kelly, for purposes of this application, if you'll make that amendment, I'll be supportive of it.
Yeah, this is Sean Penley, Planning Staff. I just wanted to suggest, I asked the applicant because what I, what I wanted to do was. It would be very difficult, of course, obviously, to. Designate one road for all truck traffic, but what I was going to suggest, if they were open to this, and if the zoning board want to consider. That they include a stipulation that would direct the applicant to direct the contractors use a preferred route for north-south traffic to be State Line Road. That, that way they can have an agreement with their contractors. That, that would be the preferred route for probably ninety percent of all their truck travel. As opposed to limiting or specifying, you know, one street that has to be all traffic. That's just one of the suggestions I was gonna make and see if they're open to that.
This is kind of seems to have the same intent. Yeah.
I just think it's harder to accountability, Kelly Russ, accountability problem comes in there. Once again, and it's always hard to figure out who's going to be monitoring, who's going to be accountable. And then when there's issues. There's issues.
So I, I think defining it. Sets the precedent. Enforcement's a different question.
Okay, so Kelly grassed. Put shall not exceed total of eighty vehicle trips per day. Hundred ninety ninth east to State Line. North, south shall be preferred route. Okay. Do we need to quantify that in any kind of way?
I, I think the number of trips in item number fourteen quantifies that.
Well, preferred. But not so much the trips, but. What does preferred mean?
Just, we're just, just shall use one hundred and ninety ninth east of State Line Road for.
Yeah, greater than seventy five percent of the.
I was, I wouldn't say preferred on either. Fred's more worried about having a mistaken identity from all the activity going out there. And, and I think if he does his best effort to, you know, instruct drivers, hey, you know, use State Line, and you're gonna have people that don't do it. And it happens, you know, I mean, that's part of, you know, human nature, but, but I think if they use best effort to try to tell them to use. State Line Road, and we have it in here that they use State Line, and he can play the bad guy like, the county told me they gotta use State Lines. Yeah, I think just take out the word preferred.
Shall use.
Okay. All right. All right, we ready for a motion then? Kelly asked, I moved that the board approved application number S E. Two two dash two four two. CUP AU for an earth excavation and filling within the specified. Area of the site and reclamation operation for the reasons and stipulations recommended by staff and set forth in the report. With the following. Recommendations, a change to stipulation number fourteen. Vehicle trips, the number of vehicle trips, trucks, employee vehicles, et cetera. Generated by the operation shall not exceed a total of eighty vehicle trips per day, combined arrivals and departures. And the preferred or one ninety ninth east of State Line Road shall. Be the, oh, shall, what did we say? Use, wait, State Line will be the.
Shall use.
Shall use State Line, sorry.
Yeah, no preferred.
Shall you State Line, hundred ninety ninth east to State Line shall be used.
There you go.
Okay. We got a motion. We have a second. All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that'll be recommended at. Michelle.
Uh, this will go before the Board of County Commissioners at their December first meeting. Just at nine thirty A M. here at the county administration building located at one eleven South Street Street.
All right, thank you. All right, thanks, everybody. That's. That's it for the business and cases. Applications, any other business? I can get a motion for adjournment?
Chairman, I don't know if this is allowed, but one of the public attendees has raised their hand. But I believe public comment closed.
Yeah, but unfortunately, yeah, sorry. Okay, can we get a. A motion for adjournment?
And while we adjourn.
Hold on a second.
All in favor, adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.